All right. Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plains City Council Business Meeting. It is 7:08. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will open up the podium for visitors to be heard. Looking for a motion, excuse me, looking for a motion to adopt the agenda first. Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frances. Second by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it four to zero. At this time, we will open up the podium for any visitors to be heard for public comment.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
We have Ron Stephan Hagan to speak.
Mr. Stephan Hagan, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Ron Stephan Hagan, 5464 Bryant Street, Maple Plains, obviously. I had a question about the five and a half percent interest on the assessment for the Bryant Street. Two and a half percent goes to the city, and I had two questions about that. Is that, that two and a half percent, does that go for every project that the city does? Am I right about the two and a half percent? No?
No.
What is the percent?
I will turn it over to Mr. Rattini.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the money or the project was bonded for four and a half percent, so it's one percent on top of what the city bonded for.
Oh, okay. And that goes to the city. Okay. Well, that's not as much, so thank you.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Stephan Hagan. Anyone else to speak for visitors to be heard this evening? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to our next item of business. Very exciting this evening is our Good Neighbor Award presentation, and I'm gonna go to the other podium. All right. Well, thank you all for being here, and it's so fun when we have something happy to celebrate, and I think it's important that we take time to do that. And this evening, it is, we are here to celebrate and congratulate our 2024 Good Neighbor Award recipient, Lisa Schreier, so come on up. Make you stand here, because this is about you, not me. All right. Ready? Just keep breathing. I don't want the medics to have to do anything. All right. The Good Neighbor Award is the highest award granted by the Maple Plains City Council to an individual, organization, or a business in Maple Plains. The Good Neighbor Award exhibits a lifetime of service and dedication through volunteerism, virtue, civic engagement, and the creativity to meet community needs. I'd like to share a quote with you this evening from our Reserve Coordinator Officer, Ben Anderson. West Hennepin Public Safety has been blessed with having Lisa on our team. She is faithful and dedicated toward the residents of Maple Plains and Independence. We are truly thankful she has called West Hennepin Public Safety home for her dedicated volunteer service, and we are proud to nominate her for the 2024 Good Neighbor Award. And we are proud tonight to give you this award. So a little bit about Lisa and her service. Lisa grew up in Independence out on Nelson Road. She graduated from Delano and is a local at heart. West Hennepin stole her away from the Reserve Officer Program at the Wright County Sheriff's Department on November 28th, 1986, almost 38 years ago to the day. Lisa has been a dedicated and valuable member of West Hennepin Public Safety. In addition to responding to emergency callouts, transporting detainees, and performing traffic control for many community events, she has been invaluable in some of her many office duties as well. Lisa has for years what edited the WIPS Annual Report, which is a significant undertaking. She documents all of the hours that the reserves put in and has performed the annual purging of dated records and reports. In addition to these duties, Lisa has represented WIPS at regional response training events. She serves as a role player, as a victim, or a witness to active shooter training scenarios for the Hennepin County area. This training is critical to developing our officers' ability to respond to high-stress dynamic events. Next Saturday, December 7th, the West Hennepin Public Safety Reserves will be hosting the 44th Annual View Santa Event, which brings Santa to our communities and raises food for the area food shelves. This is a huge event for our community, and for decades now, Lisa has been the workhorse behind this event. She puts in countless hours of preparing the necessary documents, plans, and shopping to pull off this event. She holds the children of our communities in her heart, wanting to make sure they have a chance to see Santa and get a small present this time of year. Lisa has earned several Gold Level Presidential Service Awards. These awards are only issued to the dedicated selfless individuals who put in many hours of unpaid volunteering. Lisa has been incredibly consistent and a valuable member of WIPS, serving the city of Maple Plains and Independence for 38 years now. In that time, she has donated approximately 35,000 hours. Lisa, I don't think it's a coincidence that your 38th anniversary as a West Hennepin Public Police Reserve Officer falls on Thanksgiving Day. On behalf of the hearts you have touched, the people you have helped, the communities you have served, and the Maple Plains City Council, it is my honor to present you with the 2024 Good Neighbor Award, and we are grateful for your service and your commitment. Would you like to say anything?
I have a short statement.
All right.
See if I can make it through. This is always the hardest part. And here I go. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to the city of Maple Plains for honoring me with the Good Neighbor Award. A big thank you also goes to Officer Ben Anderson for nominating me for this recognition, and all of you for being here tonight. I am truly humbled and grateful for this honor. Over the past 38 years as a Reserve Officer with West Hennepin Public Safety, I've had the pleasure of meeting many incredible individuals and building lasting friendships in the wonderful communities of Maple Plains and Independence. Even though I never lived in Maple Plains, except for a few days during the Halloween blizzard of 1991, when I couldn't make it home to my home west of Delano, I've happily put a lot of time and effort into the community. As of last week, I volunteered about 35,107 hours, to be precise, which is roughly 16.9 years of full-time paid work or a full-time job. Along with that, for 31 years, I also worked full-time and overtime as a 911 dispatcher, and until I retired in September of 2023. My love for volunteering comes from wanting to make a positive difference in the lives of others. I see myself as an enthusiastic volunteer, always ready to lend a helping hand wherever I can. The journey brings me joy and fulfillment, whether supporting local causes, assisting those in need, or working to improve our community. In addition to my time with West Hennepin, I volunteered with Second Harvest Heartland, Special Olympics, Flags for Fort Snelling, and the American Cancer Society, among others. Meeting so many amazing people along the way has enriched my life. I don't plan to retire from West Hennepin Public Safety anytime soon, so I look forward to continuing my volunteer efforts and seeing all of you in the future. Thank you once again for this wonderful recognition.
And I know Lisa has family here and current staff and prior staff, and there's been requests to take a few pictures, so we're gonna recess for five to 10 minutes, take a few pictures, and then we will continue at the meeting. So help yourself to snacks and beverages as well. Thanks again for being here. All right. We are gonna resume the meeting, and at this time, I'd like to invite School Board Member Wendy Lunsgaard from the Orno School District to the podium.
Good evening. It's nice to have an audience. It's really just me. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Muskusky Council members, and community members. My name is Wendy Lunsgaard, and I am here tonight as a representative of the Orno School District. Before I begin, I would like to express the district's gratitude to Mayor Muskusky for your continued partnership in co-hosting the annual Veterans Day celebration. It is a true honor to have the color guard from American Legion 514 right here in Maple Plains to honor those veterans who have served our country, especially those who live in our community. So thank you for that. So I thank you for this opportunity tonight to share the school district's new strategic plan, and I'd also like to briefly share some academic outcomes of our students. Please stop me at any time if you have questions along the way. Oh, thank you. Fantastic. Great. Thank you. So should I just let you know cue? Okay, thank you. So as part of our commitment in the Orno School District to continuous improvement, the district reviews the strategic plan about every five to seven years. We began this process most recently in the spring of 2023. And at the very outset of our pre-planning phase, we made a commitment to strengthen our community engagement and build trust as we move beyond the challenges of the pandemic. We recognized that community engagement would be essential in shaping the future of our district. So we set out to create a strategic plan that reflects the needs and values of our whole community. We started by gathering stakeholder input from students, staff, parents, and community members. We conducted comprehensive surveys, held community meetings at all of the schools, gathered perspectives from recent graduates through focus groups, and sought volunteers to serve on our core planning team. This was an unparalleled engagement effort with our community, with over 1,000 people sharing their ideas and feedback. We are extremely grateful for all of those who participated in what was a month-long process. A key part of the planning process was assembling this core planning team of community members. They represented very diverse backgrounds, experiences, and perspectives. This team helped guide the development of the new plan, working through several rounds of feedback and revision to ensure the community voices were heard and incorporated at every stage. In June of 2024, after months of collaboration and refinement, the board approved our new strategic plan. The plan reflects the key themes we heard throughout the process. Next slide, please. Our community conversations and input revealed desires for meeting the needs of all learners while maintaining high expectations as a hallmark of excellence for Orno schools. Seeking well-rounded students with strong relationships and a sense of belonging and connectedness. Having strong academic programs and college preparation. High-quality and caring staff, as well as opportunities for involvement and partnership for parents. The community survey feedback was both affirming and aspirational. It demonstrated a deep investment and pride in Orno schools. It stressed academic excellence as a priority. It emphasized that students should be valued, well-rounded, and prepared for life after high school. Nearly all community respondents said they would recommend Orno schools to a friend, and this is something we're very proud of. Feedback showed positive emphasis on our school community, the high quality of our teachers, the strong character programs, and our single-campus environment, and the strong relationships within our district. The district's strategic plan outlines our vision and our mission. Our vision is our highest aspiration for the future of our school district. The vision of our district is that Orno schools will inspire lifelong learners and ethical citizens who positively impact our world. The mission is the heart of why we exist as a school district, the purpose that drives us every day. Our mission is inspiring and empowering every student to achieve their highest potential through exceptional experiences. In terms of goals, we maintained a strong focus on scholarship and character, but we also refined our third goal. Rather than simply focusing on relationships as we have in the past, we've embraced the concept of connectedness. This reflects the core values of our school community, a commitment to ensuring that every staff, student, and community member feels a strong sense of belonging, value, and empathy. Our desired outcome is to foster an environment where everyone is connected, where relationships are strong, and positive experiences are at the heart of everything we do. We see this strategic plan as a living document. It's a framework that will evolve over time as we continue to assess our progress and adapt to the needs of our students and our community. Through ongoing feedback and continuous improvement, we will all ensure that the planner remains dynamic, responsive, and focused on academic excellence for all students, staff, families, and community members. This plan is available for viewing on the website. It includes more information about values and what we consider to be the profile of an Orno graduate. And I have copies here for City Council, and I have a few extras. If anybody's interested, take them home. All right, next slide. I'd also like to share, yes, this is correct. Thank you. I'd also like to share some data tonight on the academic outcomes of Orno students. Beginning with college preparation and credit, our data shows that the majority of students engage in college-level experiences during their four years in high school. For example, 90% of the 2024 class enrolled in academic programs that could lead to college credit. These experiences included dual enrollment classes, AP or Advanced Placement classes, Hennepin Technical College coursework, and full or part-time PSEO, which is the post-secondary enrollment option. Not only do these college-level courses prepare students for college, but demonstrate academic rigor on their college applications, and they can also result in significant cost savings for families when college credit is earned. Next slide, please. Looking specifically at AP participation, more students participate in AP classes than any other college-level experience at Orno. 84% of the class of 2024 enrolled in AP courses. We offer 23 different AP courses, and we have opportunities for students in grades nine through 12 to enroll. The graph shows a number of students enrolled in AP courses in recent years, as well as a total number of AP exams taken each year. You can see that there's a dip over the years of COVID, but we are excited and encouraged by the increased enrollment of students in this year's AP classes, with 608 students enrolled and 1,055 exam registrations. So that ultimately means we have many students who are enrolled in more than one AP course at a time. That's why that number is greater. Next slide, please. And finally, I would like to address how the district determines proficiency for Orno students. And this is very, I think this is probably the most important slide for the community. As a district, we have a few ways that we measure proficiency. Many people are familiar with the MCAs as a measure. You see it all over the Star Tribune, hear it all over the local news, and all the metrics. We do use this metric. But it is important to note that a significant number of Orno families every year choose to opt out of their student taking the test. When proficient students opt out, they are measured as not being proficient. They are in the denominator. So the way it works is they're actually not given a score. But their number as being a student is in the denominator. So mathematically, they're given a zero. This ultimately results in a decline in overall MCA scores and a drop in national rankings for the district. And this is a really important note. I think a lot of community members do not realize that when students opt out, he or she is considered not proficient, regardless of whether they're proficient or not. So while some challenges exist in the MCA assessments, not accurately reflecting the proficiency district-wide, the use of additional measures provide the district with a more comprehensive picture of our student proficiency. The ACT is another good measure. So as you can see, 89% of the 2024 class took the exam, which tests proficiency in the core areas of English, reading, math, and science. It's important to note that students, that most students who opted out of the MCAs tested proficient when taking the ACT. Lastly, we look at students' coursework and their grade achievement. If a student is earning an A or a B in a particular class, whether that be math, or language arts, or science, this shows that he or she is meeting and exceeding expectations for his or her grade level. We take these three measures into consideration. 94% of the class of 2024 were proficient in English Language Arts, 85% in math, and 82% in science. And I want to note, because it's important, that each student is only measured by one of these aspects. So if they showed proficiency on the MCAs in terms of this calculation, they were only noted up here once. So we are not, they're not counted twice on here, so they're not, sorry. What's the word I'm looking for? They're not...
Redundant?
Thank you. That's the word. So yeah, so the proficiency, it's not like one person is representing all areas. If they didn't take the MCAs, we look at ACT or coursework. We don't have inflated percentages. Okay? So that concludes what I wanted to share with you this evening. Thank you for your time, and I really thank you for your support of Orno schools. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for School Board Member Lunsgaard? Councilmember DeLuca?
How do those percentages compare to other schools in the state of Minnesota?
So that's a great question. So Orno, and I don't know all, I will say very high. When was it? In the spring, I believe, and it is on our website. The district sent out a mailer. So when it comes to college preparedness, and taking all of that into account, in terms of rigor, in terms of students' proficiency, Orno ranked the top, according to U.S. News &amp; World Report, of all of our, of all our local schools. And that is with college preparedness, and again, that's taking into account all of this. So I don't know specifics, but I do know that we are at the top.
Other questions?
Is there a reason why you're not mandating students to take the MCAs?
So it is a federal option for, and without any reason. They can, anybody can opt out for any reason. It doesn't have to be just medical or just... So on Orno Action, which is a committee of the school board, a legislative committee of the school board that I am also a part of, we work with legislators to let them know about this and say either, because it's not, it's not fair, right? So rankings go down, or you know, the newspaper comes out with these very misrepresented statistics. And so to say, to have to explain it, you know, if you're explaining it, you're losing. The headline is the winner. So to say it should be all, or let districts, you know, show their own proficiency. I know Kristin Robbins has strong feelings about it. We've talked about it a lot.
Yes. Well, we all know that great cities need great schools, and great schools need great cities, so we truly appreciate and value the partnership and the Orno Rotary, which Maple Plains City Council is a part of, is so grateful for the open-door policy on Veterans Day, and it has been such a privilege to be a part of that and to watch that relationship grow. And also, we would just really be remiss this week to just not acknowledge everything that's going on in the district and the grief with the sudden and tragic passing of 17-year-old Lucas Knudsen last Sunday evening, who was laid to rest today. So re-remember and honor him, and we are grateful for his legacy. He was working on a project through DECA to raise money for wells in Kenya, and his goal was to raise $40,000, which would pay for one well. And with his legacy, they've already raised more than enough for almost nine wells. So we hope that his legacy will carry on, and we just, our hearts and prayers go out to the district and especially to Lucas and his family and loved ones. So we are just so grateful for the partnerships that we all share together and that we can be there for one another.
I will pass on the message.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being our representative. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item of business before us is our consent agenda, which includes items A through E.
Madam Mayor, is it possible to pull Consent Agenda A, the meeting minutes from the 28th October City Council Workshop? We discussed in workshop earlier, some math needs to be corrected, and I'd be okay to have it corrected and put onto the next agenda in business meeting December.
Okay. We will remove item A, minutes of 10:28, City Council Workshop, and bring those before us at next month's business meeting. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve items B, C, D, and E on tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Frances.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Next item of business before us this evening is accounts payable, and I'm gonna turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the month of November, our city bills totaled $295,928.99. Our ACH transactions were $12,811.55, and street project totaled $52,472.38. I will stand for any questions that you may have on this. Otherwise, we are seeking for approval.
Questions for staff at this time regarding accounts payable? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion then to approve accounts payable for city bills, ACH bills, and 2024 street project.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Frances. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. All right. This evening, we have our staff reports before us from all of our staff, city planner, West Hennepin Public Safety, city engineer, public works, and the fire department, as well as administration and finance. Written reports will be received from the planner, West Hennepin Public Safety, city engineer, public works, and fire department. And at this time, I will turn it over to administration and finance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Jean McGinn, one of our finance directors, is here to present third quarter's financial report.
Good evening. Mayors and members of the city council. As Jacob said, my name is Jean McGinn, and thank you for having me here this evening. In your pockets, you will find a copy of the third quarter 2024 financial report. Tonight, I'm planning to give more of a high level of a report. And if you will turn to page three, I'm kind of gonna, you know, just go over, I'll tell you what page I'm on, you know, go over the references for the explanations within the financial report. And on page three, that's really focusing in on the overall cash investments, and there's a couple points I do want to draw your attention to. Overall, the city has a cash increase of about $2.2 million, and that is on the top section of page three. If you look at the bottom part of page three, though, you will notice that your cash and your checking accounts actually had a decrease of about $2.5 million. And the reason for that is because there were some bond payments made, but yet there is additional revenue coming in. And rather than keeping the money in the checking account, that money was turned into investments. And as we go further into this report, you'll see that investment earnings have increased because the market has increased, and there has been more money put into the investments. If you go on to page four, you'll see a trend line for your overall general fund cash balances. Overall, it's, you know, pretty relative if you look over the past two years. And on page five, this is just the overall treasury yield. It just is showing it over a 10-year period, so you can look at that, you know, at your leisure. If you go to page six, this is where we're really getting into the general fund revenue and expenditures. And so as we look at page six, the first item I would like to point your attention to are taxes. Now, taxes come in in July and December, and then there's like a settle-up that comes in in January, which is the... and then there's like a settle, settle-up, um, that comes in in January, which is a very small amount. And so right now, you are going to, you know, see a, um, unfavorable variance, but yet the December settlement hasn't come in. So once that comes in, you'll be right, uh, on target with your budget. Uh, the next item would be licenses and permits. There were, um, additional revenues coming in in 2024, and that is due to, um, rental permits. If you look at your intergovernmental revenue, um, the difference on that is due to timing, because local government aid, the second payment hasn't come in yet, and that'll come in in December. Uh, previously, I mentioned interest earnings. Well, if you look at the, uh, year-to-date budget, we only predicted about twenty-two-hundred dollars. Well, year-to-date, there's been about twenty-one, almost twenty-two thousand dollars. And that is, you know, just based on the market and the fact that more dollars are being invested at this point. Under your, uh, expenditures, uh, the first item I'd like to point out is under police administration, and this is also a timing difference, because there is a contract payment to West Hennepin, uh, Public Safety that hasn't been paid yet for this year, and so that will also be right in alignment with budget by year-end. Uh, under public works, there were, there is a variance there, and that's due to increased engineering and mowing expenses. Under your highways, streets, and roadways, that is due to timing of street maintenance projects, and so there is a favorable variance right now, but there will be some additional expenses incurred there prior to year-end. And in parks, there is a unfavorable variance there of about nineteen thousand dollars, and that's because of mowing that was not budgeted for the year. As we move on to page eight, uh, this page is showing all of your funds and all of the cash balances. So once again, if you look at your general funds, um, if you look at the prior quarter balance of nine-thirty of twenty-three, there was about seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand. Quarter end of, uh, nine-thirty of twenty-four, there's about five-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand. However, if you look at year-end of twelve-thirty-one of twenty-three, there was about one-point-one million. So if you look at the year-to-date change, it's about five-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, and that is due to the property tax receipt that'll come in in December. Um, we also have, um, under your debt service payments. Now, there is some variances there, and that is just, um, merely because of, uh, either property tax settlements and the timing of debt service payments. So all of those funds are absolutely fine. It's just all a timing difference there. Under your capital improvement projects, um, we do have, um, excuse me, uh, we do have a little bit of a variance there. But there again, it's just due to the different capital projects, um, that are happening at this point. And then there was also a transfer, uh, from the general fund into the CIP fund, and so that did increase the cash a bit. Um, in the 2024 street reconstruction funds, which is also a capital project fund, uh, there was a bond issue in 2024, which of course had the influx of cash into that fund. Uh, in the water funds, um, we do have a, uh, variance there of, uh, you know, negative variance of two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, and that's due to a principal payment on bonds. In the stormwater CIP, um, with this one, this is a timing difference. Previously, or in prior years, any budgeted transfers weren't made till year-end, and we've been making them throughout the year, so you have even, even, um, payments throughout the year for transfers as opposed to making one lump-sum transfer. It's just a better, um, way to look at where your overall financial condition is. All right, and under your fire funds, um, you do have a positive, um, variance there, and that, the additional variance is due to capital purchase of the Rangers and Fires accessories. So if we, um, go over to, um, page eleven, on page eleven, we're going to be showing, uh, where your investments are at. Now, the one thing I do want to point out is with your investments, you will note that they are all basically one year and less. Uh, and the reason for that, though, is because if you look at the average interest rate, you're at about five percent right now, and five percent is actually a pretty good rate of return. And as we continue to watch the market, we also need to look at, is it a good idea to ladder these out? You know, where, you know, how can we forecast out, um, where dollars need to be spent and match that up with what the market is doing and what type of rate of return that we can be giving? So we will be taking a look at that as well. Um, and the following page is just some additional breakouts on page eleven. Some additional breakout as to, um, where your cash investments are at. If we go to page thirteen, oh, excuse me, uh, at page twelve, sorry about that. Um, this is looking at your fire funds. So if you look at your fire funds, um, under the intergovernmental revenue, and this, uh, particular variance is due to the timing of receiving your fire state aid. So by the end of the year, this will all be caught up, because fire state aid will be received in the fourth quarter. If you look at your expenditures, you'll see a variance under your salaries, and the year-to-date budget is a hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, and currently, there's a hundred-and-four-thousand spent. Well, um, these wages are paid on a quarterly basis, and so that will also equal out by the end of the year. Under your fire supplies, we do have a variance due to a coding change for rentals to radio unit code, and so that, you know, it's really, it's a variance, but it's just a coding change, so it doesn't, it doesn't make a, a difference within the overall expenditures. Uniforms, uh, there is a variance because there were not as many, as much gear purchased in 2024 as what was anticipated. And under equipment, um, there is a variance due to a seventy-one-thousand-dollar purchase, uh, from Polaris, Polaris for a Ranger and RKO fire rescue unit for, for the Ranger. And, uh, once again, you have your transfers out, like I mentioned before. Uh, we are doing those throughout the year as opposed to just doing it at the end of the year. If we look at, uh, page fourteen, that is going to show the revenue and expense report for the water fund. So there's just a couple items that we want to cover on there. And within the water funds, um, the variance there is, um, under your charges for services, we have about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar variance, and that's due to a prior year purchase of a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars for Baker Park Townhomes, as well as the prior year had less rain and more demand for water during the summer months, because we had a bit of a drought. Uh, and once again, we do have about forty-thousand dollars worth of interest earnings, which, um, we did not have in the prior year, nor was there dollars budgeted there. And so that is a really good thing for the, um, water fund. And under your miscellaneous revenue, there's about sixty-thousand dollars there, and that's due to reimbursements in the current year for water bane and water hydrant breaks. Under your expenditures, uh, we do have a hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-dollar variance under your operating expenditures, and that's due to, um, recording depreciation monthly as opposed to just at the end of the year as what has been done in prior years. There again, we're just making certain that you have, um, financial reporting that's reflected, um, monthly throughout the year as opposed to having a big hit at the end of the year. Um, under your debt service, um, the difference there is because, um, previously, principal and interest was all being put under debt service, and now you only have your interest payment that's being put under your debt service, under your expenditures, and the principal component is being hit on the balance sheet under your debt payable. So just a different, you know, the, you need to account for it that way because only, only interest is an expense. Um, if we go to page sixteen, uh, on page sixteen, this is going to, uh, show you your financial report for your sewer funds. And under your charges for services, we do have a positive variance of about fifty, almost sixty-thousand dollars, and that's due to higher sewer sales and fixed charges in the current year. And, um, there, we have the same thing under your debt service for your expenditures, where, um, we have only the, you know, interest expense being shown there as opposed to both the principal and interest. And then under, um, your capital, um, we only have the, um, monthly, we have the depreciation being shown there. And if we go to page eighteen, which is the stormwater funds, um, we are showing sixteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars in interest earnings, which definitely helps the stormwater fund out. Um, and again, we have the depreciation, uh, monthly depreciation expense being shown here. And, um, you know, our transfers in and transfers out are being shown, um, on the quarterly basis as, as opposed to on the annual basis. Uh, the remainder of the report is showing the detailed revenue and expenditures, um, by line item. And I do understand that, uh, there are some changes that you would like to see on the report, where we eliminate any zeros that are on the revenue and expenditures report. And so we will be making that change for the next report, and so you don't have to see all those zeros. You're very welcome.
And our report won't be sixty-three pages long?
Exactly! Right, yes, yes. It would be, um, yes, difficult to get through a report that long. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Questions for Jean this evening? Thank you for being here, and thank you for the work and the detail put into this. It's very helpful having the transfers done as needed instead of doing one lump sum at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Jacob, do you have anything else for administration tonight?
Uh, no, I am good. We'll just need a motion to approve the finance report.
Well, we need, well, we'll do all the staff reports, but I didn't hope you had anything. All right. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve all of the staff reports tonight, including administration and finance.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Francis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, six-five-five-nine.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Aye, seven-four to zero. Next item, uh, next we'll move on to new business. First item of new business is Resolution twenty-four-dash-eleven-twenty-five-o-one, closing bank accounts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is, uh, a formality at this point. Uh, we've moved all of our accounts over to Mid-Country Bank. Um, and in order to close our accounts with Bank of Maple Plain, we need a resolution authorizing me to do so.
Looking for a motion for Resolution twenty-four-dash-eleven-twenty-five-o-one, closing bank accounts.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Francis. Any further discussion or questions?
Jacob, their, their, uh, balances currently are all at zero?
No, the checking account with Bank of Maple Plain is like five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars in it. Leaving it there just as a cushion.
I understand. Fair enough.
And I would just like to state for the record, too, as I did have a resident reach out to me again regarding this, the Bank of Maple Plain did not submit an RFP, uh, request for proposal, um, at all when we were looking at new banking. So I just wanted to make sure that that was stated again.
Correct.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for Resolution twenty-four-eleven-twenty-five-dash-o-one, closing the bank account. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, four to zero. Next item of business before us, um, is Resolution twenty-four-eleven-dash-eleven-twenty-five-dash-o-two, authorization to close our PSN account. I will turn that over to Administrator Colander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, another formality. Uh, we've switched our payment processing over to municipay, um, and we'll be closing all of our accounts with PSN, uh, with this resolution. Just so you're aware, that resolution, or that, uh, true closing date with them will be December tenth. Um, it's two weeks after the notice is given, just so you're aware.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four-dash-eleven-twenty-five-dash-o-two, authorization to close the PSN account.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Francis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Um, next item of business is, uh, Resolution twenty-four-dash-eleven-twenty-five-dash-o-three, assessing the delinquent utilities to the tax roll. And I just want to restate again that anything that has been paid ahead of time will be removed, um, from this list, so it will not be submitted to the county. Will they have till Wednesday then, or till December second, or what is the absolute drop deadline for that, for residents?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, the notice that was sent out, um, to residents that were delinquent, they had until today, the twenty-fifth, to pay. So yes, anyone that has paid will be removed from this list. But any payments that we get from now will be assessed. We won't take any payments now. It's, it's, the deadline has been met.
Okay. The deadline's passed, and after this resolution, something passes, it's done.
So basically, if someone does pay after today, it would be considered as a prepayment of the assessment, so it'll still show up on, as an assessment, but we would send paperwork in saying it's been prepaid, like it, it's done.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So looking for a motion for Resolution twenty-four-dash-eleven-twenty-five-dash-o-three, assessing the delinquent utilities to the tax roll.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Francis. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, four to zero. Next item, letter D, approve liquor license and tobacco cannabis license. And I'm gonna turn this over to staff for a summary, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we have before us tonight our yearly renewals. Uh, M&amp;M Wine and Spirits for off-sale, Iron Exchange for off-sale, and Sunday Liquor, and Monies for off-sale, on-sale, um, and Sunday. Um, at the time of creating the packet, I did not have applications for renewal from Liquor Depot, McGarry's, or The Smoke Shop. I have all of those now. Um, they've been sent to, uh, West Hennepin Public Safety for their criminal background checks, um, which I'm sure they will probably just come back. So I would ask the council that they approve, um, all of them that are listed here.
Um, would you recommend doing that, uh, pending approval, or we're not concerned?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. I think that would be too. All right, um, so looking for a motion to approve liquor license and tobacco cannabis license, um, for M&amp;M Wine and Spirits, Iron Exchange, and Monies, and pending approval for Liquor Depot, McGarry's, and The Smoke Shop.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, four to zero. Um, next item before us this evening, letter E, Resolution twenty-four-dash-eleven-twenty-five-dash-o-four, fifty-three-seventy, Highway Twelve subdivision. I'm gonna turn this over to our city planner, Mr. Koltis, to walk us through this.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council. I have two items for you tonight, coming from the, uh, planning commission after being considered at a public hearing. First of which is a minor subdivision to allow a property... First of which is a minor subdivision to allow a property located at fifty-three seventy Highway twelve to be split into two parcels. The applicant, Jake Softley, and the owner, Alcoa Limited Partnership, have requested that the city consider allowing a minor subdivision that would split the approximately thirteen-acre parcel into two parcels. One would ha, one would be approximately seven acres, which is the west tract, and the other six acres, which is the east tract. Properties located on the north side of Highway twelve, generally between Delano and Spring avenues. The subject property has an existing manufacturing warehousing building that is comprised of approximately a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. It's zoned mixed-use Bud Avenue by the city. It's also guided as mixed-use under the city's 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The applicant approached the city about the possibility of splitting the two properties several months ago. And one of the, kind of, major considerations relating to that split was access to what would become a second property. The applicant requested that the property to be split would also have a individual access that would ingress egress onto Highway twelve. The city is not the authority or the regulator, the regulator, or does not have the regulatory authority over Highway twelve access points, and it was sent to MINDOT for their review. Ultimately, MINDOT recommended that the city do, does not allow a second access to the property that would be split off. And the city worked with the applicant to then develop a shared ingress egress that would serve both the existing, what is, what is going to be known as the west tract, as well as then the proposed east tract property. And, so with that, MINDOT consideration, the applicant then asked the city to consider the subdivision. The city reviews all subdivisions and goes through a process of understanding standards relating to both the existing and then the proposed property. You can see by the aerial photograph that there's the existing warehouse building, which is located on the far west side of the property. You can also see then the, the kind of undeveloped portion of the property that is, makes up the east side of that property. And so, with the split, the applicant would maintain approximately seven acres with the existing manufacturing warehouse building, and they would break off approximately six acres with the undeveloped eastern portion of that property. City does have standards relating to mixed-use development. In this particular case, the size of these parcels is actually fairly substantial for Maple Plain properties. And with that, the minimum lot size for mixed-use Bud for commercial properties is ten thousand square feet. Six acres certainly exceeds the ten thousand square feet, so they would meet the applicable standards with both the existing site, which would be the remaining portion, and then the proposed new portion, which would be that east tract. The city noted the ingress egress, and there is a image in your packet that just highlights how that would come into play. And so, if you looked at the, that particular diagram there, you can see the pink represents what would be a easement area over and across the ingress egress that would then provide an access point into that east tract, as well as maintaining access into the west tract of, the west tract and all of the various improvements. The applicant is proposing to widen out the, the kind of throat of that particular ingress egress such that they would have a left and a right turn lane coming out, as well as a single lane coming in. The city talked about a couple of other points relating to the proposed subdivision. They noted that, we noted that the proposed subdivision line runs north and south through the property. It was noted that that line runs right down the middle of an existing stormwater management basin that was installed as a part of the improvements associated with the warehouse building when it was recently, when it recently went through site plan approval to allow that building to be split into essentially three individual portions of that building. It was noted that this line runs right through the middle of that. At the Planning Commission meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion relating to that line. Initially, city staff had recommended that that line be moved to the east so that the stormwater management facilities associated with the west tract were wholly on the west tract. During the meeting with the Planning Commission and then through some additional discussion, the applicant's engineer noted that that stormwater basin would likely be the, the location for future stormwater that would serve both the east and the west tract. And so, with that, Planning Commission felt comfortable with that line running down the middle. But it was noted that then a, the stormwater management agreement, which now is really associated with the building on the west side and the improvements associated with the west side, would need to be amended such that it would cover both parcels, and there would be a shared stormwater management agreement that would provide for that shared management of that facility. The city also noted that future access to both properties may be limited due to potential changes to Highway twelve. We have no kind of plan for Highway twelve, but we have talked a lot about access management onto Highway twelve. And it was just noted, whenever we do subdivisions, whenever we look at kind of future development, we try to look at how does access work for those developments now and in the future. We did note that there is a potential in the current, on the current site where a road connection could be made to Pioneer Creek Drive on the very north side. There are some grade challenges. There may be some space challenges associated with that. We also identified that there's potentially some sensitive cultural resources that could be in play with that, with that access. But, I did note for Planning Commission discussion and ultimately council, when we're looking at a subdivision of a property, these are the times we look at, are there ways to future-proof that, or are there things we should be considering? Planning Commission did review that and ultimately recommended approval without any kind of further consideration for a future access, noting that if Highway twelve ever had that significant of a change where access was limited, say, right in, right out, or something of that matter, that that would be the time when we would look at secondary or additional access points into this particular site. So, with that, we did hold a public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners discussed the application. They talked about the stormwater basin and that north-south property line. They talked about access into the site, both relating to the MINDOT comments and, and direction, as well as that northerly potential access that could connect to Pioneer Trail. Commissioners found that the condition or criteria, conditions or criteria relating to a minor subdivision had been satisfied by the applicant, and they did recommend approval to the city council with the conditions and findings that are included in the resolution and in your packet. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail relating to the request.
I'd be interested to hear on the public hearing if there was anything that came forward and.
There was nobody at the public hearing specifically for this item. There was somebody who had attended the public hearing who was there for an item that got pulled off the agenda, the seventeen forty-one Bud Avenue. They happened to live on Pioneer Creek. They happened to then make a comment about the traffic on Pioneer Creek, but it really wasn't related to or targeted, but they made it during this particular public hearing, so.
Thank you.
Mark that auxiliary egress off the north side down to Pioneer Creek in case you mentioned future-proof. It's really not the city's responsibility to future-proof it. I mean, they're aware of it. That's all we have to do.
Yeah, I just, I like to bring it up, right? With the minor subdivision, I think you do have, the city does have some ability at that time to say, hey, you're creating a new property. We think that new property ought to have X, Y, or Z as it relates to the access. Staff doesn't have a strong feeling on this particular one. I just want to point out that there is this little bit of area. If there was strong feelings from planning or council or something relating to requiring a ingress egress easement from the east tract across the west tract, that could certainly have been a comment or something that you could consider. But, Planning Commission, as they reviewed it, said, I don't think we need to do that at this time. That could be something that's looked at in the future. And the property owners can always work that out in the future. It's not to say that's off the table, so.
Available.
It's possible.
Other questions for staff?
Okay. Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion regarding Resolution twenty-four eleven twenty-five dash oh four, Fifty-three seventy, Highway twelve subdivision approval.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
I will second it.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, four to zero. All right, next item of business before us is ordinance three, three-three-one, Cannabis Ordinance Amendment. And I am going to turn that over to Jacob or Mark. I'm not sure. To Mark? Okay, to Mark again.
Just going to wait and see if he'd grab it. No, he.
I was like, um, I didn't ask who gets this one. Not me.
Okay, Honorable Mayor, council. This is an item that's coming before you also after being considered at the Planning Commission meeting. And this is a proposed amendment to the City of Maple Plain Ordinances Title fifteen relating to land usage, which would consider adoption of standards relating to cannabis businesses. As everyone's well aware, the state made changes to allow cannabis use, cannabis sales in the state of Minnesota. And so, the cities have been waiting for some time trying to monitor the status of where the state statutes, powers that were, that were created when the law went into effect, where they would kind of pan out and filter out as it relates to land use, and then other aspects of, of essential regulation around cannabis businesses. So, on July thirty-first, the Office of Cannabis Management, which was the office that was created to then deploy or oversee the new statute relating to cannabis use and management and everything, along with that, issued the first draft of its administrative rules related to adult-use cannabis for the state. With that issuance, they did start to outline what cities can or can't do as it relates to regulation. And it also started to outline what they intended to do relating to licensure for businesses, cannabis businesses in the state. And so, we've been kind of waiting on this because we had been told previously that cities have until essentially January one to adopt ordinances pertaining to cannabis use regulation. What we've been told now is that they issued this draft. They still have to adopt the rules, and then they have to begin issuing licenses. And that is probably now sometime late twenty-five is what we're hearing. It was originally end of twenty-four, then it went to spring twenty-five. Now, I'm hearing it's maybe even late. With that said, we proactively want to be in front of it. We want to meet the deadlines. If cities want to establish regulations on cannabis use, cannabis business locations, number of cannabis businesses, we would have to make an ordinance amendment to do that. And so, what's being proposed tonight is adoption or consideration of adoption of an amendment to the city's ordinance, which would begin to create some sort of structure and regulation around cannabis, adult-use cannabis businesses. And so, there's a couple of things that the cities are, are able to do and some things we can't do. So, the city cannot prohibit the establishment or operation of a cannabis or hemp business which is licensed by the Office of Cannabis Management. The cities can enact or put into place regulations relating to certain types of cannabis or hemp businesses by way of zoning, and we can stipulate then where various businesses can be located within the city. It's similar to like what we used to, or what we've all done with adult use. At some point, we can regulate, we can't prohibit. And so, we have the ability to do that. We also have the ability to establish buffers around certain land uses. And so, really, what we tried to do then is sift through this information. The city attorney, Administrator Colander, Assistant Administrator Larson, myself, we all kind of went through this. We talked about it, and we kind of came up with, here's some, here's where we would start to regulate. We took it to the Planning Commission. They, they made some additional comments, and now we're bringing it to you, and I'm going to just walk through it. I'm not going to go crazy into detail. I'm not the, well, I'm not the expert. I know more than some people, but we did this in concert with the city attorney. And so, if there's questions or, or comments or concerns, that would somehow kick this to another meeting, or we needed feedback from, from him. We can always do that. We have time now, most likely. Well, we do have time because the Office of Cannabis Management's not ready. So, while we were trying to just get this done by the end of the year, there is some time. With all that said, there is a list in your packet that talks about the types of licensed businesses. And we went down that list, and you can see the table where it identifies all of the various businesses that can be licensed, or that will be licensed by the state. And so, we have tried to break down where each one of those businesses, solely from a, from a land use standpoint, would be permitted to operate by way of zoning district in the City of Maple Plain. And so, you can see that all of the various licenses, with one exception, would be permitted to operate in the city's I Industrial District. And we, we used to have multiple industrial districts. We only have one industrial district. And I'll show this a little bit more on a map in a, in a future, or subsequent slide. The one that we took out of I Industrial is Low Potency Hemp Retailer. And there's, there's provisions on what then that low potency hemp in a definition, and there's potency stipulations on what they can sell, how potent, what, what type. And we said that that particular type of retailer that would meet the definitions that the state comes up with on that could, could potentially operate within the MUG district. That is our mixed-use gateway district. That is also the location we currently have low potency hemp retail businesses. We have at least one licensed, and with that, we also have the Iron Exchange, which is a retailer that potentially could sell under this low potency hemp retailer license. So, with that, we took an approach that all of the uses with that one exception could be located in the I Industrial. That one exception, because we already have some uses and because there is some, you know, something to having a retail establishment with that, kind of, in that retail district, would be permitted. We also talked about some other regulations that the, the statute allows. It allows the city to limit the number of non-hemp edible retailers. And the city is allowed for cities under ten thousand to limit that to one for the entire city. And so, we're suggesting that that be incorporated into this ordinance in that you could have one non-hemp edible retailer within the city. The, the ordinance, or the statute also allows the city to place these types of uses as conditional rather than just permitted, as long as there's essentially reasonable criteria for that. And staff is recommending that all cannabis businesses, including low potency hemp, become conditional uses, meaning that they aren't just outright permitted, but they would have the conditional use permit process. That allows the city to at least review businesses, review relationships between businesses and surrounding land uses, ensure that kind of all of those aspects are at least able to be looked at. And it kind of adds another layer of transparency to the, for the ability for the public to comment on conditional uses. And then, if there are circumstances which require mitigation such that the use being proposed doesn't unreasonably take away from, or take away from reasonable use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties, that the city has the opportunity to at least comment on that. So, we're recommending all cannabis businesses are included in that conditional use. Then, the, the last piece that the city has the ability to do is that we may prohibit the operation of cannabis businesses within a buffer distance from certain other land uses. So, those other land uses are schools, and then daycare residential treatment facilities, public parks, public or athletic fields, and similar uses where there are, where it is common that children or minors gather and, and take part in activities. So, with that, the city is also recommending that the city consider. So with that, the city is also recommending that the city consider establishing the maximum buffer of a thousand feet around a school and then seven hundred feet around a daycare, five hundred feet around a daycare or residential treatment facility or public park. What that means for us, and we created a map, I'll first just show that. That red area is really the area then in the mixed-use gateway district that the city would allow low potency cannabis retailers. That is the only area in the city that would allow that type of use. Pretty much every other portion of the city, from a low potency retail standpoint, would be excluded. We then also, we created the buffer map, but can you just show the exhibit? I'll call Kevin's exhibit because he pushed me to make this one to try to be a little more clear. So what I did is I almost took the inverse of the buffer and I said, if you applied the buffers as we wrote them in this ordinance, we would have the following allowed or permitted areas for certain types of businesses. So the purple, if that, I guess that's purple, pink, those areas highlighted in pink would be the only areas where all other cannabis-based businesses could be located and only within those areas in the City of Maple Plain. The green triangle generally, and, and I rounded these lines a little bit, but that would be the box within which the low potency hemp edible retailers could locate within the city. Meaning if you look at the buffer map, all other areas of the city are either zoned wrong or, or not zoned to allow, or they would be included in a buffer. So with that, Planning Commission did hold a public hearing, Planning Commission did have a pretty lengthy discussion. Planning Commission ultimately worked with the buffer limits and we added some language to address Planning Commission's recommendations such that they really said, let's try to get the buffers to allow that gateway strip and not prohibit that gateway strip where, and one of the buffers, if you know our buffer map, we have Meadows Park, which is a public park. And Meadows Park, if we enacted a buffer around the full perimeter of Meadows Park, really at any level almost, it would start to infringe on that gateway, gateway retail district. And Planning Commission felt that that should be the area where the low potency edible hemp retailers would be allowed. And so what we ended up doing, and City Attorney Landsman wrote the language where we enacted a buffer around Meadows Park, but we took the buffer off of the south and east sides of Meadows Park, we eliminated the requirement from those two property lines to allow essentially that red box to occur, if that makes sense. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, go into more detail. I'll be honest, you're the first city that I've taken this language through. A lot of the other cities are working on it, every city attorney has published twenty memos on model ordinances and all these other things. One of the things Planning Commission said is, and we talked about it, is they're like, hey, Mark, if we put something in place and we decide later, maybe we need to change it, and I said, you can change it, we don't know. And so really Planning Commission, their conversation, I think they were, they were saying, we don't know enough about this business, we don't know enough about these uses. Let's, let's put the, the regulations on and we can always come back and massage, take off, move however we need to based on what we learn as the, as the, kind of this whole new thing rolls out in the state, so. And there was no public comments, just, we did have a public hearing, zero public comments.
And Councilmember Francis, you sit on the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay. All right, questions for staff? Has anyone talked with Director Krails regarding this?
Yeah, he's not here. He's a hundred percent in favor of the regulation, obviously, that we're imposing. I think he'd recommend kind of fullest extent.
He feels confident with the perimeters and the numbers and?
Yeah, I think, you know, in our conversations, I mean, he just wants the city to be ahead of it, so we're not behind it and then we're dealing with that type of, that type of use without any regulation around it, so.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, did you have any other conversations with Chief Krails?
I have not talked to him at all about this one, so that's why I'm asking.
And the, and the page in which you highlighted in a red outline that kind of carves out mixed-use gateway is more consistent than the color highlighted one because the color highlighted one includes half of Haven Homes, and I didn't think it was your intention to allow retail sales of low potency hemp at a senior facility.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's right.
Okay.
They haven't talked to me about it. I mean, as you know, they have the ability to administer medical.
We're not getting into that.
They can't sell it, but they could administer, I suppose, so.
I mean, all the things I never thought we'd have to deal with as elected officials. I've read more and talked more about cannabis in the last.
And it's still super unclear, just to be clear.
Well, they're not, they're not even clear, the state's not clear, the league's not clear on giving us something to model, I mean, everyone's trying.
And if we get something, I mean, we monitor it, so if we get some more information before the licenses are issued, we'll, we could always, we'll always come back if we need to.
So just to be clear then, all staff is in recommendation of this, in favor of this. And we do have the flexibility to make changes as needed as things progress and change from the state and.
But be careful, you, you, you can't make changes after the fact. If we allow a license to someone in mixed-use gateway and they're open operational, we can't go in after the fact and change it to our liking.
No, so, so that's a good point, and I guess in my, so we're trying to put probably the most restrictive, right? We have to create an area, we're limiting that area to one zoning district in the city, and we're limiting it to a pretty specific area within that zoning. So you're right, once we, once that, once that's out, out, we're, those businesses could be grandfathered. Now, we can change the ordinance and a new business could come in, right? But what, what, what I was suggesting in, we, we can add additional stipulations. If something changes that would require us to make changes, we can do that. The Planning Commission actually was asking, are there a couple other businesses that should be allowed in the mixed-use gateway? For one, they were talking about should medical cannabis sales specifically be allowed? So a dispensary of medical cannabis sales be allowed in the gateway, mixed-use gateway rather than away? And they had that conversation, ultimately they said, we don't know it now, I don't know. So they said, let's not do it today, but we could change it in the future and say, yeah, we can, we can move any of those over into the, you know, these districts. So, for what it's worth, yeah, it's a good point, though. We can't take it back on the, on the ones that are there.
That would be there.
But you also mentioned that every applicant would be under a conditional use, correct? So I mean, we could impose certain conditions.
Correct. And we talked about what those conditions would be. And I think what we left it as for now is our criteria in the conditional use section of our ordinance are already spelled out. It can't negatively, so let's use that to start, and then if we decide later we need to add additional conditions, we can do that.
Cool.
That's a tool for reassurance. Okay, all right, with that then, looking for a motion for ordinance three, three, one, cannabis ordinance amendment. Not at this time, sorry.
I'll move, we approve this ordinance as written.
Okay, motion by Councilmember DeLuca.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Fay. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of ordinance three, three, one, cannabis ordinance amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. All right, thank you for your continued work. Next item of business is Resolution twenty-four dash one, 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 nine, dash zero, five, certifying the special assessments for the 2024 Street Reconstruction Project. And I will turn that over to Administrator Colander or Engineer Martini.
Administrator Colander? Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Unfortunately, I was not here for the public hearing for the street assessments. However, I just wanted to touch base on a few things that are included in the resolution. The interest rate of five and a half percent per year is the interest rate that we're going with. There was a question about that earlier. Our true interest rate according to our financial plan was four point zero, and they recommended that we have a one and a half percent increase over that in order to cover the principal and interest for the bonds. So that's where that interest comes in to play. Excuse me. Mr. Johnson had approached the council about the assessments from the Howard project, Howard Street project. The engineer did take a look at that, and that has been removed because he was assessed at that time for those portions. We have had one so far payment in full already. We did make some changes to the, the end language of the resolution. It was a little confusing, so basically just set it so that everybody has until December thirty-first to make an interest-free payment. After the thirty-first, it'll be assessed the taxes the first Monday in January, and the one year's interest will be applied at that time. If someone makes a partial payment, their interest will be based off of the remaining balance, not on the full assessment amount. So I'll stand for any questions or if Dave has anything else that he wants to provide to the council. We'd be looking for a resolution or a motion to move that resolution.
Questions, Councilmember Fay?
I just want to confirm something for the public record. There was some discussion on, there was some discussion on corner lots and frontage and someone had mentioned ten years, I believe, at the public hearing. I think I identified a resolution that we put together back in two thousand eighteen, I believe, that identified it as six years. Does that? I should have printed it.
We don't have it in front of us, so we can't reference it.
We're outside of the six, that, that's fine, but it, it was, but I just want to confirm going forward what that timeframe is.
That would have been before they were here.
Right. Right. I, yeah, the, the ten years is, is what I had seen before, but can't confirm where that came from. So we, we'd have to look at that going forward.
Other questions for staff? All right, so with those updated changes, looking for a motion to approve Resolution or adopt Resolution twenty-four dash one, 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 nine, dash oh, five, certifying the special assessments for the 2024 Street Project.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second it.
Motion by Councilmember Francis, second by Councilmember DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your work on that. Those are hard things to do. All right, next item of business is council reports. Councilmember DeLuca, would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, congratulations again to Lisa on her Good Neighbor Award. It brings joy to my heart when we have neighbors that work together, and she's a great example of who we are as a city. This month was filled with difficult issues to deal with, the public hearing on street assessment. I've said this before and I'll continue to say it, it's one of the most difficult things I do as a councilperson, is to have to assess or to tax somebody for something. But I did appreciate the interest that was shown and glad to see so many people that took an interest to show up, to share their perspectives. I take that responsibility, though, very seriously, and I think we have been very responsible as a council and very fair over the years in the way we've had to do what we had to do. Secondly, we had this month a citizens advisory group. Kevin and I began working with a group of citizens that are looking at our common spaces and dreaming of the things that we could do. And it was very eye-opening for me, and I think Kevin probably for you as well, that, you know, we're seeing it from a different lens, we're seeing it from the lens of residents and from the lens of parents. And it's, it's very refreshing, and I think ultimately our common spaces will have, will be better utilized when we can bring some ideas back to the council and to the Planning Commission. Finally, we had a personnel meeting this month, talking about our year-end performance review and pay cycles, so that we're ahead of that as we get to the end of the year. We came up with a process for the administrators' review that we talked about at workshop today, so that we'll be doing Kevin's, or Kevin, Jacob's review on, in December, on December tenth. And then talked a little bit about the HR issues related to the transitioning with our council effective at the beginning of the year. So been a busy month.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLuca. Councilmember Fay?
It has been a busy month. Election Day came early and then it was followed by Ken seeing myself right out of a job. We had a Veterans Day ceremony at Orno High School sponsored by both the high school as well as the Rotary Club of Orno. Attended special meetings and public hearings on assessments and delinquent taxes in addition to a mid-month fire commission meeting where we spent a great deal of time discussing potential department merger updates. I continue to participate with mayor at the Rotary Club, service projects, speakers, as well as a pair of city workshops, tonight's Good Neighbor award presentation, and tonight's business meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Fay. Councilmember Francis?
For me, it was a busy month. We had Planning Commission after not having a meeting for six months, seven months between meetings. Great discussions for that meeting. Attended the Veterans Day program at the high school, did the election canvas, and attended Highway twelve safety coalition. And, you know, we felt that we have accomplished a lot with that, but in the last couple days, we were reminded that Highway twelve is still a very dangerous highway and there's room for more improvements to make it a safe path to travel. So, and then some public hearings, workshops, business meeting. A lot to take in and a lot to process, makes my head spin. So, that's about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Francis. Yeah, November was a busy month for everyone. The other thing that we've continued to work on is the rebranding committee and had a couple meetings for that and was able to bring some designs forward tonight during the workshop and look forward to moving that along and getting resident feedback and input when we're ready for that. The League of Minnesota Cities was able to attend their board meeting. Really, we're working on policies and priorities for 2025. And then there was a very nice veterans celebration there as well. At the chamber meeting this month, West Hennepin Chamber of Public Commerce, we heard from one of our very longtime businesses in town, Herkylift. So it was fun to even learn new things about them. And then Senator Limer and Rep. And then Senator Limer and Representative Robbins came as well to do an update. Councilmember Fay did a good synopsis of the Fire Commission, so we'll continue to keep working on that. The Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, we had different law firms come in and talk about municipality law. So that was a little bit, I wouldn't say exciting, maybe a little bit over, learned some new things, we'll just say that. Rotary, we continue to serve Veterans Day flags for heroes and have speakers and meetings. Highway 12 as well, it's just, it's so hard every time you hear of those fatalities. So again, our condolences to the deceased and the injured in the accident this past weekend. And we'll continue to advocate and work for improvement upon that road and that 36-mile corridor there. Personnel, Councilmember DeLuca did a great recap of that. And then the street assessments as well, those are, those meetings are just filled with so many different emotions. Definitely not my favorite, but as an elected official, you know, our priorities are to make sure you can drink it, drive it, flush it and keep people safe. And street assessments meet three out of four of those priorities. And we all know, all of us sitting at this table, all live in the same town, we're your neighbors. And we have a street improvement plan and our streets are on there too. And one day, if not already, it will be our streets being assessed. So I just want to acknowledge that, that it is not easy and it's what we need to do to continue to move forward as a city. So, on a positive note, I had the opportunity to do some fun things as mayor and I was able to speak to a group of Girl Scouts and it's always fun just to talk to future leaders and hear their questions and spend time with them. Also, I serve on the Haven Homes Mission Advancement Board and it is just great to hear about businesses in our town thriving and doing so well and they receive multiple five-star ratings and their waiting list is long in all levels of care over their independent, skilled and transitional care. So, it's great having them on Gateway Boulevard and in town. Was able to attend the Orno Healthy Youth Meeting and then I am the municipality representative on the Orno Coalition. So again, it's that partnership with the schools that we never want to lose. Had coffee with Representative Robbins this last week to talk about Maple Plain and priorities and opportunities to partner. Had coffee with two new mayors-elect that we will soon be working with together. And then tonight, obviously, it's just fun to celebrate the Good Neighbor Award and it's just a great thing for our city to do together to focus on something positive and really proud of that award and all of the recipients and welcome Lisa to that group. And then would be remiss if we did not talk about Saturday is the 44th Annual View Santa Event. And that started, I moved to Maple Plain when I was five years old and it is still going on, so it's awesome. So we hope you can get outside and visit our local police reserves. They will be at Independence City Hall from 3:30 to 4:15 and they will be in our very own Veterans Memorial Park from 4:45 to 5:30 collecting food and donations and you can take pictures. So come out and celebrate that beloved tradition and kick off the holiday season. With that, any other business to come before us this evening? Hearing none, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Francis. All in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the meeting's adjourned at 8:47.